Seven o'clock, the meeting will come to order. I'm Grace Lessbrunt, Cascade Township Supervisor. Works later, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Supervisor Lessbrunt.
Here.
Trustee Kessel.
He's excused.
Is excused.
Treasure Pierce.
Here.
Trustee Shipley.
Here.
Works later.
Please rise if possible for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic, to the citizens, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion or discussion for approval of tonight's agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Kessel, to approve the agenda. Sorry, sorry. Trustee McDonald. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article four, presentations, we have none tonight. Next will be item five, or article five, public comments. It's the time to speak on anything tonight's, tonight's agenda. Please come to the podium if you're able. Three minutes, and please state your name and your address for record keeping. Now is also a time to ask any questions that we can bring up during the fire department presentation. Anything virtually miss brought?
Or if any of our Zoom participants would like to speak during this public comment, please raise your hand. If you are joining us via phone, please dial star nine, and I'll wait just a moment. I don't see anyone raising their hands.
Okay.
Hi guys. My name's Chris Taylor. Six oh two seven Champagne Court. Here in Cascade. My question is this, and I know the discussion is going to be about the fire station that we all wanted. My question is, in the past, we agreed as a township to notify the members that live here, people that live in the township, when an expenditure was going to be 500,000 or more, that postcards would be sent for comments to let us know what's going on and the time that we can meet and have public discussion. I just want the insurance of this board, for the record, that that will happen. Can that be commented on now?
By anyone, right, and I, I don't have a problem with it. There's a timing. I'm just trying to decide how to answer because I don't want to say no. Does anyone else wish to comment?
Do you have a time limit on when you're going to vote on this?
No, but the construction season, I was talking to the management company today. And there, there's a time crunch from certain perspectives for starting the building. This is not my. I don't have a problem with doing postcards, I'm just trying to figure out.
When you get them out?
I don't, yes, without, public support needed, fire station needed, timing, crunch time.
Are you under some kind of pressure to get this thing done in a week or two?
Ben, how long does it normally take to get postcards back after we send them out?
Talking about getting postcards back?
Yeah.
No, no, just, well, because we don't need, we just need to notify.
Notify.
The public.
Notify the public and have a hearing on it or a public meeting about it?
Give people the opportunity.
How long would it take to get the postcards out then?
So it usually takes us internally a couple of days to design the postcard and approve it, and then we send it to the mailing company. Once they get it, it's usually anywhere between a week to 10 days between when they get it.
The one we did last year for this fire, for the, around this time for the fire station, did we do that in-house or did we have someone else do it, that little postcard?
Did the same process, so we developed the postcard in-house and then we used the mailing company.
There's no reason why we can't do that again, right?
No, it would be, I mean, it's the biggest capital improvement project we've done, there's a.
We made a commitment to the taxpayers and residents of this township, and I'm one of them, and I think that we owe them that promise. If we told them that, Mr. Taylor, if, if we told them that, then we gotta do it. If it delays the project by, let's say, two weeks, or whatever the case may be, so be it. This project is not, I don't think any one of us has got a pickaxe and is gonna go over there right now, tonight, and start digging dirt. So, Chief, where are you sitting on moving to the new station temporarily? So next few weeks, you're gonna be there anyways, the next few weeks, correct?
No, we're gonna stay at station one.
Well, that's what I mean. So by sending postcards out, let's say it takes two weeks of months. We're not delaying the, the construction of that.
We'll say this. We're at the precipice right now, any delay? Put time development into, like, three-year season?
So by any delay, are you talking about a day, a week, a month?
That would be something that I talked to, I talked to Brian about that station. More so, we are at, we're right on the precipice. If it is a couple of weeks or a month delay.
So any small changes that we make in the plan? Minute changes, nothing major on the footprint or anything? By having a two-week delay, will that affect that? You have to have a yes or no answer tonight, that's what I'm asking.
We don't. Or the public's right, just wait. Want everybody, you know, saying, hey? And I will say this, this is an estimate team.
Right.
We've got the next five months of design and building to have public engagement meetings. Public says, we don't want this. We're not voting on spending or signing a contract tonight. It's just going forward.
So there's, go ahead.
Let me get to Chris's question directly and not get ahead of our. Chris, this is only for estimates tonight, I think you're exactly right. If, I think we should send out a postcard, but we're not even there yet. We don't even have estimates yet, we don't have actual bids back yet, and I think when that time comes, that's when the crunch, the decision, crunch-making decision is, and that's when we should have the public definitely involved.
Chief, does that sound right to you?
Absolutely. Right now, we, these are estimates of what we think the bid will come back.
So can we send out a postcard? Yes, should we? We can decide, and I think we'll vote yes.
Well, we will vote yes.
Yeah, we should, I just.
All I'm asking is I want the commitment from this board that whatever timeframe you're on, a postcard's gonna go out to people, the 17,000-plus people that live in this community, so we can have our say-so in this, you're about to spend 10 million bucks. That's good, hard-earned money from taxpayers, including yourselves. And I want a commitment from this board that you will notify us as to the date, we'll have the, the, you know, the discussion, the amount, and all that. That's all I'm asking.
Seems reasonable.
Yeah, and you'll hear that tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Lots of opportunity tonight to say yay on that.
Supervisor Lessbrunt, I'm sorry to interrupt, there's someone who has raised their hand. Mr. Van Zelkema?
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Yes, I'm all in favor of the new fire station, especially station number one, that place, I don't know how old it is, I remember back in the day when it was the library, and the firefighters deserve and need a new quarters. Those guys answer all sorts of calls, medicals, car crashes. If the airport has a fire, or a plane goes down, they also do mutual aid and everything along those lines. Those guys need better quarters, they deserve better quarters. Ironically, I actually agree with trustee McDonald, what he said as to when the timing should be. So, good on him for that. But if we can get this done, I know we already had the big public input for the new fire station, obviously not a lot of people did, did like the new township hall. I think you guys did a good job in regards to utilizing a vacant building and got a lot of cost savings that way. And also, we have millions and millions of dollars just sitting, and I do believe this would be a good use of those funds to finally show our public servants that we support them and that they should have a much better facility than they, that they have been, currently been using for decades. That's all my time, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else virtually that would like to speak? I don't see anyone at this time.
Okay, that will conclude this portion of public comment. Article six, approval of the consent agenda. Is there discussion or a motion?
Motion made to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article seven, financial actions. Is there a discussion or a motion regarding financial actions?
Couple of questions. I was going through the finances, I saw in the fire station numbers, there's a, there's a transfer from H. I was just curious what H is. You know, page it is? Page thirty-nine. Couple, couple of lines transferred to H for $105 total. I'll have to get back to you on that. Okay, then one other one under the DDA for pigeon paid $99.
What page is that, trustee Nordhook?
I don't have that page. Pigeon pay. I'm confused.
I'll have to get back to you on that one as well.
Thank you. And then I was also looking for the million dollars from the state into our, our COVID funds. Where's that at?
That was received back in November. That's currently held in ARPA COVID slash fund. So when you get the, so right now, all you have is the payables for December because it's end of year, the financial statements weren't ready, so when those are in the next packet, you'll see those in the fund.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a motion by trustee Shipley?
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry, I can't remember. Was there any further discussion?
I make a motion then to accept the financial actions as presented.
I'll support that as well.
Motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald, to approve the financial actions, all in favor?
Aye.
Sounds like a grand trunk railroad.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article eight, unfinished business. These are the supervisors' appointments to the townships' boards and commissions. Again, this is the balance of the recommendations concerning the standing committees. These are the same recommendations as I made at the previous meeting. Any revisions to the policy that was discussed at the last meeting is a separate issue and it would not apply retroactively. These committees are advisory only. The policy itself, I would say presupposes that committee memberships will change, and like all of our committees, no board member has a tenured appointment to any of these committees. I think these standing committees, committees can be helpful. Going through 2022 without all four of these subcommittees will require extra time and for all of the trustees, but at the same time, that might also bring a little bit more sunlight to our governance. So after carefully considering everyone's commentary, I'm offering the same appointments that were set forth in the memorandum for the infrastructure, the public safety, and the personnel finance committees. Is there discussion or a motion?
I make a motion to approve the appointments as you presented at the last meeting and tonight.
A second.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee Nordhook. Works later, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
No.
Supervisor Lessbrunt?
Yes.
Fisher Pierce?
No.
Trustee Shipley?
Yes.
Works later?
No.
Motion failed. We will continue to operate without those three subcommittees. Article nine, new business. Item zero zero six, 2022. Review and consider the, the design alternatives and budgets to Fire Station One. Manager Swayze?
Great, thank you supervisor. So we have our fire station design team, ready to give the board and the public an update on what's going on with schematic design for the Fire Station number one project, so chief majors is here. If you want to come up to the podium, chief, just so you can answer any questions, and then on our Zoom, we have our team from Williams and from Triangle, and from Prydon Newhoff, so from Williams, we have Mark Bushhouse and Natalie Clemmons. From Triangle, we have Brian Pritchard, and from Prydon Newhoff, we have John Verplank, so they have put together a presentation tonight to kind of walk you guys through how we've gotten to this point and what the things are that are driving the budget dollars. Can you make it so they can share their screen?
I'm not sure, hold on. Who needs to share their screen from you guys, Natalie? I think I have to make her, do I make you the host, Natalie?
I think if you disable the screen sharing, I can share it.
Got it. I think, I think I did it. Also, I've had a request from someone online that no one's speaking into their microphones. So if you could speak a little bit louder, thanks.
Also, we have another one of our architects that is a participant and would like to be added to the panel, his name is Scott Lang.
Let me find his username one second. What is his username? Oh, there he is. Okay. All right, he should be good to go.
All right, we'll turn it over to the design team. Natalie or Mark, if you guys want to kick us off?
Sure, again, Mark Bushhouse here from Williams Architects, thank you very much for having us participate in this important meeting and for this important project. This evening, we're going to walk through the design of the building at this point. We are at the end of the phase known as schematic design. This is the phase where we have taken the initial concepts of basic site usage and space program and have then translated that into an actual floor plan and elevations and external appearance. We've also reviewed the basic building materials and the building systems, that is heating, cooling, electrical, plumbing, and so forth, with staff to review and come up with the basics for the project. So this evening, we're going to talk through the, the project. We'll highlight some of the design features that we think are good to note. Also, because we know numbers have changed a bit since this was conceived of in times not too far along ago, we'll talk about things that we're aware of that had impact on scope. So when it comes to actual cost for the project and what's happening in the construction industry, we'll leave that for Brianna and Triangle to talk about. Our hope is this evening to go through this project with you, answer your questions, help you get a better understanding of the design, its features, review to design exterior looks that we've generated on behalf of, and at the request of the township. And whenever the board or the township is ready, we would like approval of that, and then that will allow us to proceed to the next phase of the project for us, which is design development, where we take the basic floor plan and look in all this that I just described, and we get much more detailed in the design. That again is checked at the end for pricing by Triangle. And with that, then, if, again, with the township's approval, we would move on and do construction documents, which is the very detailed drawings and specifications that are necessary to get a building permit to bid and then build the structure, the facility. So today, we're at a good place to check in and make sure the township is comfortable with the design, get your feedback, give us any direction you may choose to give us, that, help us to modify or do what we need to do to better have this project meet your goals. So, and then when it gets to actual schedule, again, Triangle has a nice schedule, they can review and talk through how these phases work into construction, et cetera. So with that, then, let's get the plans going, we'll start off, I believe, with the site plan. Right. You can zoom in a bit there. I'm also gonna have John Verplank from Prydon Newhoff talk a bit about some civil engineering aspects of it. Let me give you a quick overview of the project. In the center, basically, is the, the basic location for the building. On the south side is the apparatus bays or garage room for all the vehicles. Just north of that, on the left side is the living quarters, and then to the right side of the building on the northeast, that's the administrative and public areas. The facility and site take, have kept the curb cuts on Thorn Hills about where they have been before, again, there are reasons that maybe John could explain, but that's where returning vehicles can come in that have been out on call, come around behind the building and pull back in the station from the back. They do exit to the right, to the east, down the driveway, down to Thorn Hill when they are answering calls. So that's the main flow there. We have a, and then we have segregated parking, so that, on the east side of the building, there is a visitor parking lot that then allows people to come in, park there, go in the front door, and meet with administrative people, attend meetings, et cetera, as they might need to. That's as far as any member of the public would need to go. Then staff and emergency vehicles would then use that north driveway around to the back of the building on, on shift, and on-call personnel can park back there, get into the building as they would need to. So those are the basics of how the station is laid out, it is, in a lot of ways, fairly close to where the building is now, however, some important changes have been made, the apparatus room now faces to the east, instead of right now, it actually faces south. One of the benefits of this design is, one, the vehicles don't have to make a turn as they come out of the apparatus base, which is better and faster and safer. And frankly, for the folks that live to the west in the apartment buildings, as they come out, and if their lights are flashing in the nighttime, the good news is they now have a building in between them and the vehicles, so it should be quieter and, and less intrusive than in years past. All good things. With that, I think, John, can you step in here for a couple of minutes and talk about some of the civil engineering features and certainly some of the scope things that have happened that will cost a bit?
Absolutely, and good evening, John Verplank with Prydon Newhoff, helping out on the civil engineering on the project. Like Mark said, the, the building placement isn't too far off from where it's at now. It's just the building that's there now has some drainage issues because the site has a large amount of fall heading down towards Thorn Hills. From about the middle of the building down to the southerly Thorn Hills Drive, there's about 18 feet of vertical elevation difference. So with this new structure, the, the intent was to obviously get the building at, at the same elevation, so there's not steps inside the building, and then to have a flatter area outside the apparatus base so they could wash vehicles and work on them and not, you know, have them want to roll down the hill. And then to also try to, a couple of goals on our project were to try to improve the slope down to Thorn Hills. And so, to do that, we lowered the elevation of the building a little bit from where it's at now to try to get that grade under about 7%. That makes it a little easier exiting, and then entering from the north driveway is pretty tough, it's about a 10% drive coming up to the sidewalk. Unfortunately, we're not able to do too much there because of underground transformer wires and there's a lot of utilities, but we are gonna try to drop that about a foot and reconfigure the drive to the north. Right now, it's a really pretty poor circulation route where it comes in not perpendicular, it comes in at an angle. So a, a car from the north lot that wants to turn left on Thorn Hills, if there's more than, say, one to two cars, they're blocking the inbound lane into the fire station because there's no ability to sit in a, like a left turn lane. So this layout shows the reconfigured approach that pulls that driveway, instead of having it angled right toward Thorn Hills, it comes due south, which creates at least a two-car stacking for left turns, so that should be a a nice improvement. Other than that, we had some, you know, the grades a challenge, there is a cell tower up at the northwest corner of the site that can't be moved, and nor can the grade be changed much there because they've got underground cables and stuff going to the self, cellphone tower that are protected with easements. So we have to leave that kind of sitting proud there at the high point of the site, which creates a little bit of a retaining wall in that area to adjust our grades because the water wants to run east, like toward the building, and we obviously don't want water going into a new building, so we have to do some grading into there, which creates the wall. Other than that, I, I think we've we've created a proper barrier-free access to the building, right now, the site does not have a proper barrier-free sidewalk, so we've incorporated that with the pedestrian, or sorry, with the visitor parking lot in front and created some nice space in the back for kind of outdoor use and patio space for for the station.
Thank you, John, could you speak a moment to some of the things that have occurred that may have added some cost to the project?
Yeah, this, this year, the, the stormwater regulations have, have changed pretty much region-wide, and Cascade Township adopted the new Elgro stormwater, lower Grand, lower Grand River watershed standards and water quality initiatives, so that definitely creates some cost because instead of looking at a site, like, you know, it's been an existing township hall and fire station, so there's a lot of paving there. The new Elgro standards go back to like a virgin field where pretend there was never a development there, and the stormwater that you have to provide stormwater and water quality initiatives for goes back to like a wooded situation, so you don't get any credit for having a pre-developed site, so it's, it's basically starting over with today's standards, and so we're incorporating a lot of groundwater recharge, infiltration, and, and additional piping to account for these new standards, so that it's definitely definitely a hurdle, but it's, it's good for the environment, for the groundwater recharge, and keeping that water from running directly out into Thorn Hills, right down into the creek, so it's a good thing.
All right, thank you, John, all right. Any questions from the board about the site that we could answer?
What was the added cost for that stormwater?
What was the added cost for that stormwater?
Why don't we leave that for conversation from Triangle? They're the ones who have more of the numbers. Again, they would still be roughly estimating because again, you know, they didn't do, we didn't do it full engineer, we didn't do the engineering before and then repeated. With the new rules, so it'll it'll be. Some guesstimating on their part, but we'll let them chat a bit about that.
I have a question. You said that the fire engines could only exit to the right. Is that correct?
That is their main exiting path, yes. Doesn't mean they couldn't go the other way if there was one of the equipment failed and they needed to use a reserve piece or if they had a. Another vehicle that faced the other way, they can go either. It's just we have taken the the main frontline equipment that is. Typically the first responding vehicles and they are pointed east.
Do you have enough space for parking? Enough parking?
We believe so. We have been reviewed with the. Fire Department of what they need for their staff. Full time on call emergency responders and some paid on call and. At this point, we feel comfortable. We've got the right number, though there'll be ongoing conversations with the township's zoning and planning staff. All right, then why don't we move on to the next slide? That's the floor plan. A quick overview, again, this is the same as it was. The building is mainly a one level building, though you see a little bit in the lower right hand corner, there is a mezzanine storage area. Flat room, a very simple space that's great for some mechanical equipment and storage of equipment that's. In reserve, that is located over a zone just north of the main apparatus base. It's a good, very inexpensive storage way to build. For a fire station and very helpful for department to keep their reserve equipment nearby. Then if you can go back to them, just looking at the overall floor plan. Of just the building area there. Again, like we said, the building has three or four basic zones. The southern piece there is the four bay drive through. Apparatus base. The lines you see. Down the middle of each is actually a floor drain, so again, you you really have these about sixteen feet wide each bay to allow the vehicles to park and open their doors and. Not interfere with each other or. Cause personnel to run into things as they're hustling onto their vehicles. Very important space. Just the north of that are a series of spaces we call apparatus support rooms. There's some important things happening there I'll get to in a moment. Then just north of that. Is the living quarters for the emergency response personnel. That includes bunk spaces for sleeping, toilet and showers. Exercise. A day room for them to watch training videos or other videos or TV in the evenings. There's a kitchen and then a dining room to the far left, which does lead out to a patio. That will allow for outdoor eating, outdoor exercise and daytime opportunities. More on the right side of the floor plan is the administrative zone. On the very far right, there's an entry that comes off the visitor parking lot into a lobby. It has two individual user toilet rooms to support that use. And just adjacent to that on the north is a. Training room that can hold forty plus people at tables to allow the fire department to conduct. Training sessions, meetings, et cetera. They also could host any meetings the city would would want to have held there. Just the left or west of that is their main conference room. For staff to meet and review and do their work. Just south of that is a group of offices for chief deputy chief, fire marshal. Support clerical personnel, copy areas, et cetera, and a good work zone. And then that has a door down the main long corridor that separates it from the emergency response personnel. We found that's very effective to separate these zones because again, they operate on such different schedules and have such different work assignments. That is good to allow the administrative and daytime staff people to have their area. Close linkage and great interaction with, but allow separate. Kind of living methods with the emergency response personnel. And then they need to, of course, and very importantly, flow quickly and safely into the apparatus room so they can get into their vehicles and respond to calls. Again, we've worked very closely with your fire department personnel on this floor plan. The chief and his staff can tell you that their satisfaction with this, we believe is very high. This design incorporates bunk rooms for the individual firefighters. That flows right past a pair of toilet and showers to allow them to use the restroom if they need to as they would go on a call. From there, they can go directly south. Through corridors that take them directly into the apparatus room and into their primary response vehicles. Let's a very good method at night. And then on the left side in daytime is is. On the left is where daytime use of the firefighters and other emergency response personnel will be. They again are all close together, ready to go. There is a corridor open to go directly south. Also straight to the apparatus room and get them onto the app onto the vehicles. There are no steps. Even though we have to drop the apparatus floor six inches from the living area according to code. We have done some very gentle sloped corridors, so there's no steps for tripping. Which is very important as firefighters can have three or four calls in the middle of the night. And the less we make them deal with steps and all that is is important. So a quick and safe movement of personnel, we believe has been very well accomplished. Another big goal of this facility is to greatly enhance the cancer prevention. For the firefighters, that is when they come back from a structural fire, their turnout gear and and their clothing is badly impregnated with. The carcinogen gases from a firefighting. Situation. We have through our years of experience and a lot of research and your staff's involvement have come up with. Arrangements of rooms that allows for people to take their turnout gear, get it washed. Take a shower to decontaminate their skin, change into clothing. And before they ever get into the living quarters, they are clean and their gear is clean, so they're not bringing those carcinogens. Into the living quarters, thereby maintaining a much healthier environment for them. The good news is we've been able to lay these spaces out in a way where we didn't have to build any additional rooms or hallways. It's simply how we interconnected them. That allows them to operate this very efficient way. On the right northeast corner of the apparatus room, there's a hose tower. That is needed to drain and dry their hoses. However, again, this has been done in a multi. Functional way such that this host tower is also stairs to the upper mezzanine storage area I described. It also allows a great deal of training opportunities for the firefighters to practice moving hoses up and down. Do we even have a hatch on the roof? They can do repelling. There are access panels to the outside that mimic windows in a multi-story building that they can put. Ladders on the apparatus, a concrete apron outside the building. Lean them up against the tower and practice extracting people. So again, just really giving your personnel very good opportunities to train. On site, so they are still very available to respond to calls. And again, we're double, triple using things that we're building. To allow multi-functions and have a very good facility to support your personnel. So. So just a lot of good features here where we've doubled and tripled. In fact, another one that is necessary now is a tornado shelter. This is required by code in fire stations. It has to protect its occupants from two hundred and fifty mile an hour category five tornadoes. And we certainly have done that, but instead of just creating a special space that sits empty most of the time. We've been able to also be able to incorporate into that a the shower for the decontamination. And it's also a fully useful shower to support the living quarters and the firefighters as they would need to. Use the facilities or shower, so again, double, triple using spaces very effectively. So these are all important things that we believe has resulted in a plan that will. Space wise, meet the needs of the facility and your department for a long period of time. I think we've been very careful on budget here. The space program that was prepared is within like about one percent of the actual size of the building. So your departments work very diligently with us to hold the line on size and growth. Keeping to what they know they need and will need, so that's excellent. And again, double and triple using spaces really makes very effective use. However, there are things that have happened in the last couple of years that impact this that do have some cost impact. The tornado shelter obviously is an expensive room to build. It has to survive the building collapse onto it. And two by fours shooting at it at two hundred and fifty miles an hour, so that's that is a big deal. We also have to deal the cancer prevention with specialized HVAC to some level, so we exhaust air and control air pressure. We also have scrubbers in the apparatus room to remove particulates and other dangerous aspects of the air in that space. That are all very necessary. And also, we are recommending and this the fire department is is in strong desire of having bifold doors. That will service the emergency side exit of the station. These doors fold outside to side as opposed to a typical sectional overhead door that would roll up. It gets out of their way much quicker. They can see when it's wide open. These doors are less likely to be accidentally hit, fire call when they're leaving. They have a very long life durability wise. They also seal and keep wind out much better, which is more energy efficient. Of course, all of that does come at at a price. A set of four doors here over a regular quality overhead doors is over one hundred thousand dollars just for that. Also, one of the things that's very important in the climate you're in. In Grand Rapids with a lot of snow. Is getting snow cleared away from the apparatus doorways on the outside. Having snow build up there causes real issues of safety and et cetera for the vehicles coming and going, especially on calls. And if you don't have the snow melt system in the pavement. Your staff will have to use great quantities of salt on an ongoing basis to keep that area clear. That salt in turn will get on to the overhead doors, which I described as being expensive and that salt will attack those over time. So by having the. Heated concrete slabs, the ice is not a problem. It's safe. And it also helps other aspects of the building and those doors last much longer and of course, increased energy efficiency. Additionally, every year or two, the building codes do keep pushing up the minimum energy saving requirements for these facilities. We have incorporated a very energy efficient shell. Very good windows, very well insulated walls and roof, good quality doors, and like I described, these apparatus bay doors are. Some of the very best available to control airflow and insulate. So those those are things that are needed and I think will have good payback in the years to come, but do have a cost to them. So. Lot of good features, a lot of effort being made to get the most value. We're using a lot of concrete block on the outside, I mean, brick on the outside, concrete block in the inside where needed. To create a very durable lasting building with good systems and materials. That we believe can service the township very well for many decades to come. All in keeping with what we understand the township's goals are. So, long explanation, I hope that made sense and was helpful. Certainly stand ready to answer the questions you may have about the floor plan of the building.
Mark? Hey, Mark, um, yeah, you said, you know, you you've said you've taken. Every opportunity to to do it right. The first time we had the best materials. The most long lasting ones, one that are going to be cost effective in the long run. We know this is probably the biggest investment we're going to make and we want to invest in the township. So the 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 tough question is, how how long would you estimate that this building would last us for? Would say fifty years, safe?
Easily fifty years. The the basic building shell, if properly maintained, really has no end date to it. Things that have made previous fire stations obsolete has first and foremost has been. The apparatus base designed fifty, a hundred years ago were all about much smaller vehicles, sometimes horse, you know, horse pulled wagons. And those are much smaller. Now, you know, we all see the ambulances, fire fighting vehicles, ladder trucks. And and they, we now need fourteen feet of clearance above them. The overhead doors need to be about fourteen feet wide. It is our belief that since the sizes that are in this facility. Really match up with the size of vehicles that are the maximum allowed on the highways for semi trucks and you can look at how high bridges are. We don't see apparatus vehicles being allowed to get any bigger than they are now height and width. Therefore, we just don't see an end date to any major aspect of this building. I think you could adjust and tweak this building for. Many, many, many years to come.
Good, that was my follow on question. So thank you for reading my mind.
A good question, and it comes up. All right, again, interrupt me anytime, but I think maybe now we can take a look at the exterior. We initially proposed this design that you're looking here, design one, we're calling it. Again, a brick exterior, some stone banding at the base and around certain elements. Sloped roofs, mostly hip configurations. Around, again, this is a look that we thought would be desirable and acceptable to the township. It's cost effective. It should last a very long time. We think it's attractive. And of course, heavy using durable materials of brick and stone, we think complements the village well and the sloped shingled roofs. Do work with a number of the surrounding buildings and other buildings in town that do have similar roof shapes and and shingled approach. This is the view from Thorn Hill. Thorn Hills and as you look back, once you click the next one, we have. A series of photos working our way around. This would be from the visitor parking lot in the east, looking at the main front entrance. Again, to the left is the apparatus days. The north side of the building, again, good materials, but very simple design. Was sloped shingled roofs and windows were needed and good brick above and stone below. Good, long lasting, we think attractive look. This is the west side of the building, the back as it were, the four apparatus bays you see that have overhead doors that roll up. Sectional like other places you've seen, this is where the vehicles can return. The left side, you'll see there is a an overhead glass door to the exercise room out onto a patio. To the right, there's a little eating area of the. Into umbrella there to the inside eating and kitchen area. In the foreground, you see the drive wrapping around, allowing vehicles to return into the apparatus base. On the south side, the left side, you'll see the apparatus base. We have a series of very large windows to bring a lot of daylight in. Minimizes the need for artificial lighting, electrical use, but also provides for a good work environment. For the crews. And again, to the right, you can see this side of the hose tower and training. You can see the gap under the roof that allows the flat roof area where they can do training under that and repel down into the tower. A series of window opening or not window openings, but openings just below that. That allows training with ladders to practice extracting people in and out of buildings. And of course, then the drive to the right that will work its way down to Thorn Hills. So that's the the basic concept we came up with. Fire staff was very pleased. It seemed to fit. I'll check a lot of the boxes. However, in reviewing it further with some village township review of the project, we were asked. If we could come up with a very quick alternative that maybe didn't use the slope roofs and more of a. Traditional. Urban appearing fire station with maybe a little stronger presence and some more attractive masonry detailing. That could look like a a very. Good old station. So here's a work we did, just some sketch format. To allow a quick look and some pricing that we'll look at this evening. In this case, we're using what's called low slope roofs, very close to flat. You know, for the rest of the building. The walls around the building then extend up higher. To hide the structure and provide a parapet around the edge, so you don't see things coming out of the roof or ventilation and equipment, et cetera. Also gives us opportunities to do some nice detailing and banding, running around with stone and. Brick and different little offsets and piers. We've enhanced the design of the. Tower itself and have added some more stone trim and arched openings, opening over the main front entry. Next. Now, this is the elevation to the north. Again, certainly simplified, but still is carrying the theme. Of the additional banding and stone and a little more play with the walls in and out to create some more interest. Looking at the back of the west side, in the apparatus doors to the right, more simplified. And the living quarters to the left. Still picking up some of the piers and banding and detailing that that we show around the front of the building, but again, simplified in these areas. Next. South, same repeating good windows and glazing a daylight into the apparatus room, but just continuing the theme. Of the bricks and the banding and the stone as has been generated around. And again, you can see enhanced detailing on the hose tower itself. Now you don't have to go to that schedule, let Triangle work their way on that one. So backing up here, those are the two basic concepts with the design of the building. One with a slope shingled roof. Floor plan wise, they are ninety nine point five percent, the same thing is the same layout. They function the same, they work the same. It's really, what is the look that is most appropriate for the township? Obviously, there's some difference in costs that Triangle will review with you. And we present these two, believing both are attractive quality buildings that will serve the community well. And we look for thoughts and direction from the board this evening. Any questions I can answer?
Thank you.
Very well. So I, I'll just to wrap up our little part of this thing, what we're hoping for this evening. Or at least in the near future, if the board could look this over, understand the pricing and schedule. That Triangle is going to present what the, what the impacts of these things are. And if possible, give your design team and your staff direction to work with us. You can pick a direction of these two or some hybrid and understanding the dollars involved and allow us to move forward with continuing our design work. So when you're ready and you're comfortable, let us know and we'll charge ahead. So with that, turn it over to Triangle for them to review schedule and budget.
Thanks, Mark. Again, just a real quick introduction. My name is Brian Pitchford. I am with Triangle Associates. And we're the construction manager hired for the fire station. Just kind of a quick background of who we are, for those of you that are viewing and also the panelists, the trustees. So Triangle is a hundred and four year old commercial construction. We're based out of West Michigan. We do a lot of work in multiple segments from civic, civic and community that the fire station is, we do a lot of work, commercial retail. In the process of building the new Subaru dealership just and Cascade as well. And we do a lot of work within the K twelve market. So just again, a hundred and four years of experience hopefully wins some credibility as we look at this schedule and also look at some of our pricing here. Again, like I said, we do a lot of work in the K twelve market. How we see that that translates to your project as a whole. As we work for a community, so we don't have work for a single owner, we work for a community. And that's how decisions are made. And we also, you know, we work recognizing the importance and the resources of taxpayers' dollars. So again, understanding that this meeting and this forum is important for people to be able to see what we're doing and how taxpayer dollars are being spent. So that's who we are. It's probably going to be a little difficult for you all to see that schedule up there. I know it is for me. But I'm just going to kind of go over a high level. So I've got my cheat sheet over here to the side. So but really kind of what I know, I didn't get to hear what Chief had to say because he wasn't at the mic. But I did want to address kind of on the schedule here, kind of a big overview. So Mark just reviewed what we've looked at would be design number one and design number two. This schedule right here is based upon design number two. Now I say that only from a standpoint that from the construction timeframe, there's not any difference in duration between design number one and design number two. So those are going to mirror each other within the construction duration. The only real difference and why I wanted to look at design number two tonight, because there is an impact specifically on what we call that pre-construction process. So if you can, if you can see it as small as it is, there's that yellow line there that talks about owner approval. So that's really board approval. Township approval, but we've, we've gone through like Mark explained, the SD phase. And really what we're here tonight, and I apologize, I don't recall the gentleman's name, I believe it was resident Taylor had asked the question about. And I think trustee McDonald responded that tonight, really the process isn't to approve the project as a whole. Tonight, the purpose of this meeting is to be able to allow us to move past this SD phase and on to the DD phase. So that's really what tonight's about. So if you see there that owner approval, that's really not looking for approval on the project as a whole, but just allowing us to move forward on the SD. And what that means is moving forward with either what is determined to be design one or design two. If we go with the design two scenario, Williams will require some additional time to get to a point that you saw design one. So again, they put some renderings together, but not completed a full SD packet for design two. So that's what you would see below there is that two weeks. So really, it just kind of walks us through, we go from SD to what we call DD, which is design development. After design development, we do a constructibility review and we prepare another budget. So tonight I'm going to share with you what's our first budget, first schematic design, but then we would go at DD and we would produce another budget. Take a look, track how we're doing, are we coming up, are we coming down, are we going off the rails? So we would produce another budget at design development. And then again, there's that next step for us to move on, owner review and sign off. And then we would proceed forward with, Williams would proceed forward with construction documents. So the construction documents is what leads us to put it out onto the street. Get a permit and move the project forward. So we've really got three phases of design and we're just kind of in that phase number one. For bidding and procurement right now, we are anticipating that the project would bid in July, bids being due in August. Which would then allow for construction to begin in early September. So I think what Chief was trying to iterate for us tonight, what's important for us is to be able to move to that next DD step. We build in Michigan all the, in winters in Michigan all the time. We, we can accommodate for those winter conditions and put some additional provisions in place so that we can continue to, to build. However, admittedly, there comes this tipping point where it becomes more expensive than what, than what makes sense. And so the reality is we're kind of at that tipping point right now, where if we can't proceed forward with the design, we lose too much more time in the SD phase. Then we really start to move to this tipping point where we're not looking at a twenty twenty two construction start date. Instead, we're looking at a twenty twenty three construction start date. So I'll say, you know, every day does count at this point, just because again, we're, we're, we got to get off that SD phase, not to the next portion of it. So again, right now the schedule shows construction beginning in September. This is just again, super high level. But that puts us doing, you know, working through the winters and seeing enclosure in what would be late April of twenty twenty three. And then completing the project in August of twenty twenty three. So we've got about a, a full twelve month duration. From when we would begin construction to completion, that includes demoing the existing building, site utilities, like John discussed. All those types of things, new building, substantial completion, commissioning, closeout and, and walk away. So again, very high level, the, the budget and the schedule and the design all, you know, are interwoven and lend themselves together. I'll get into budget next, but if there's any questions specifically on schedule that I can answer before we get into the budget piece of it.
Brandon, do you see any problems with, obviously we've all been listening, hearing about the, you know, material costs increases because of supply chain issues. So more from a schedule standpoint, you see any particular materials that would endanger a, a construction start in September?
I don't. We've been looking at that. We've got a couple of items that we know that we're going to have to address. We've got an issue with hollow metal doors and frames. We've got an issue with roofing materials. But I, you know, taking a look if we can hit that timeline for, you know, bidding and when we would actually be looking for those materials. We've still got plenty of time in our schedule to accomplish that. With the hollow metal doors and frames, sometimes we get, we have to change the method in which we do it, which is called a knockdown frame. Where we can't necessarily put the frame up as we're laying the block up, but that's not unheard of. So there's things that we can do to kind of work around that. But as Mark mentioned, the, the project, whichever iteration of the project we look at, we're looking at doing light gauge metal trusses with wood sheathing. And so in both of those scenarios, that's good for us because right now metal joist and deck is a significant lead time where if we were with metal joist and deck, we probably would be looking at some issues and having to do an early procurement. But right now, based upon the design, we shouldn't have any issue securing those, those trusses.
Thank you.
Sure thing. All right. I think we can move on Natalie to budget, what everyone's been waiting for. I'll leave. All right. Now I really know you're not going to be able to see this, so you're just going to have to take my word for it. So as Mark mentioned, so if you can see, I'm going to first talk about the, the twelve eight budget. That is going to be what's design number one. So that's the shingle sloped roof budget. So that's the twelve eight, which is actually that's the second column from the left. And then that first column there, the one ten twenty twenty two budget, that would be design number two. So that's that low slope roof with more, I'll say more brick presence. So just again, kind of high level before we dig into the numbers specifically. As Mark mentioned, so in the schematic design, we are, we're working kind of, we're working high level. So we have a good understanding of the programming, we have a good understanding of the assemblies, we know how we're going to how we're going to heat and we're going to cool the building. We, we've got the, I'll say the basis and the general figured out. So when we prepare our number for the schematic design, we look at the drawings that were prepared by both Prine and Newhoff as well as Williams. And then in addition to those documents, they produce narratives for each of the different packages. So from a structural standpoint, we have a concept of, yep, we're using light gauge metal trusses. Yep, we're using block and brick here. So we have a really good level of understanding, but again, we haven't fine tuned those details. So if you could kind of think of it from a standpoint of you know, electrical lighting, we know we need lights in the space, but we don't maybe know whether we need five lights or three lights at this point, or how we're going to switch it. So that's just kind of a good, you know, thought process of what schematic is. We've got great information, we just got to, we got to get a deeper dive as we work through the drawings. So when our team puts together the, the schematic design budget, we don't just look at it as the building as a whole. We don't just throw a square foot number and say, okay, this is an eighteen thousand square foot number. It's X number of dollars per square foot, boom, that's where we're at. So we do create a very detailed breakdown and we look at each component separately. So we look at, you know, what's it going to take to demolish this building? We look at square footages on concrete from curb and gutter to the precast concrete to topping everything. So when you see there those work categories, that's how we take it off. That's what, we, how we create those breakdowns. So we're really getting as detailed as we possibly can to look at those numbers and understand what's happening in them. And then as we move through, when we present that, that DD budget, what you would see is you would see a comparison between SD and DD and that delta change, like what changed, what did we assume correctly, what maybe needs to be, get tweaked a little bit. So again, that's really just kind of high level of how we, how we look at the schematic budget. So the work categories really are going to be pretty self explanatory. A demolition then again is they, it's the demolition of the existing facility as well as any of the, the site utilities. That type of thing, concrete is just that, it's the concrete for the building. Precast, there is a small portion of precast that goes over and serves the mezzanine storage area, which also becomes some of our mechanical space. Masonry is going to be the biggest number that you see there on, on both iterations of the drawings. That's your concrete masonry block, which forms the, the structure and the shell of the building as well as the brick veneer. That makes it look nice. Steel framing and miscellaneous metals. We do have some of that, some lintels, some, some columns, some additional structural steel that supports the roof structure. The carpentry and general trades, that's a, that's a big collect all for a lot of things. So that's your doors, your frames, your hardware, toilet accessories, toilet partitions, sinks, countertops, cabinets. Really all of those, those things that you see. Again, membrane roofing is what we have here. Both iterations do have a certain amount of membrane roofing because behind those sloped roofs, there are flat roof areas that we're hiding mechanical equipment behind. So that's the membrane roofing asphalt shingles and gutters. I did the same thing to Chief. I read like half of these and then I got tired of reading them. But again, there's, there's just, there's a lot in there, pretty self explanatory. Mark talked about the specialty doors, so those are going to be the bifold doors for the fire station. And I just kind of wanted to hit on that. So that, that is a price tag there, but when we look at the life cycle cost of overhead doors, we look at the abuse that these doors take. From a life cycle, the, the, the bifold doors are a better product long term for the, the township. Glass and glazing is our windows, our storefronts, the metal trusses is just exactly that. That's our roof structure in addition. That number also houses anything as far as interior partition walls, drywall, that type of thing. Those next three items you see there, zero nine three nine six, well, there's two nine six. That's our flooring materials. We've got a couple of different florings throughout the space. Painting appliances, window treatment, again, fire suppression, plumbing, mechanical test and balance. All that good stuff. We did talk a little bit, I think there was a, the question from one of the trustees after John had followed up as far as what we're looking at from a cost standpoint for what's changed within our watershed there. We did do a breakout to kind of see and evaluate what that additional cost was. So for the changes that have happened relative to code, as well as what we need to do to try and level out that site. That's about a two hundred and two thousand dollar price tag. So there are definitely some real dollars attached to those code changes as well as attaching to, attached to the fact that we just need a more, a more level site, both from a safety standpoint and again, just from a stormwater drainage standpoint. What other note did I make there? Again, one of the, the questions that came up asked of Mark was, you know, how long is this building going to last? And we call this a hundred year building is what we call it. Again, from a concrete masonry standpoint, from a brick standpoint. Again, these are a lot of the facilities that we're building for schools. We don't want to build a twenty thirty year building. We want to build a hundred year building. And so what we're building here is a hundred year building is what we would term it. From the, the shell and structure itself, the only thing that really changes that I would say would be the, your roof selection. Your asphalt shingles, they're going to tell you they're a twenty five, thirty year shingle. Most asphalt shingles are closer to a fifteen, twenty year. Is more realistic for the lifespan of those guys. A membrane roof, you can usually get push out to thirty, forty years if you take good care of that membrane roof. So your membrane roof can get you a few more years, but again, there's, there's a price point there. That it'll last longer, but it costs you more out of the gate. So so I'm going to, I'm going to stay up here. So again, and again, feel free to jump in if you've got any questions as I go through this. So we first looked at those, those work categories and this is what we call really the, the trade cost of work. So that's you know, that's the, the brick and mortar, that's what your, your, your hard costs of your building are going to be. And then the next line down from there is what's design contingency and construction contingency. And both of those right now are, are set at five percent. Now, as we move through the design and we start to refine things. You know, by the time we get to CD, which is the construction documents, that design contingency drops off. We carry that contingency because again, right now we don't know if you need five light fixtures or three light fixtures. So our, our history and our experience would say that, you know what, right now we know things are going to push and pull a little bit. So we put in a five percent design contingency at this state of the project. And again, that number obviously as the cost of work goes up, so too does the cost of the contingency. For construction contingency, again, that's also set at five percent. We don't recommend anything less than that three to five percent range. Sometimes depending on the site, we will recommend as high as a seven percent contingency. Again, that's important from a standpoint, you know, one of the items that we're carrying within our site work is unsuitable soils, which means that the soils are not in a condition that we can build on them. So we have to haul them out site and bring new soils in. Well, at this point in time, we don't know the extent of those unsuitable soils. We've got a pretty good idea. But we'll carry an allowance. And so that construction contingency is there for those items that, you know, perhaps we've got a little bit more unsuitable soils than we figured on. We've got other items that happen through the course of the buyout that we say, hey, you know what, we really, we really need to have a construction contingency to cover these things. So again, that too is a function of the cost of the work. The next items you're going to see down there are triangle fees. Which is our, our general liability insurance is just that. It's the cost of our insurance to do business. And that too is a cost of the work item. So as costs go up or down, so too does the cost of our general liability insurance. Pre-construction and project personnel as well as construction support. So pre-construction is what we're doing now. And project personnel is our staffing for when the project is under construction and then construction support are those. I'll say, kind of untangible things, surveying, real road sweeping, fencing, temporary partitions, safety and security, those types of things, that's what would live within construction support. Those are fixed items because those are determined based upon being a cost, or they're determined based upon the duration of the project. So as I mentioned, whether we go with design one or whether we go with design two, we've got a fixed schedule duration of 12 months. So regardless of which version we go with, those are our costs. So those are our fixed costs, I'll say fixed costs, but they're dependent upon the overall duration of the project. The next item there is a payment and performance bond, which again, is to ensure that if any subcontractor should default financially within the project, that the township is protected by this payment and performance bond. And again, that one is also predicated based upon the cost of the work, it's a percentage thereof. And then the last, my second page there, there is no permit fee for this project, other fees and professional services. That would be Williams as well as their subconsultants, so you saw John tonight, so Prine and Newhoff's numbers in there. Williams also has others for mechanical, electrical, plumbing, structural design. And so those are, those additional services, consulting fees, geotech reports, all those types of things. So that's the professional services. I guess just to kind of note, so that, that's an item that we show is below the line. Triangle does not assess fees or anything like that on AE fees. Same thing with these owner allowances, so these are costs that Chief Majors and his team would procure directly. We're not typically in the habit of buying what we call FFEs, which is furnishings. Those are usually procured by our owner, so that's what this list of items are down here to cover for the owner allowances, and again, regardless of iterations, those costs are the same. And again, Triangle does not assess fees on any of those items. So that brings us to kind of the, the total estimate, which takes everything into consideration, which takes those owner allowances, design fees, our fees, and then the cost of the work. So option number one is what you see for the 9.2 million. And then option number two is what you see for the 9.8 million dollars, which is a delta of just under $600,000 for those different versions. So before I open it up for questions, I'm gonna take a drink if you'll let me do that for a minute.
So, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Someone asked about solar roof, if solar roofing was an option or made sense?
Maybe I could speak to that for a moment. Certainly as we reviewed options for the facility and what would make sense and where to spend the township's money most wisely. You know, I've seen other comments below about you put a metal roof on this thing, what about solar, you know, other options for energy efficiency and net zero? All things that are, that are happening in the industry. Again, this is all about how the township wants to spend its money. I think in, in listening to the township and its goals, we have approached this saying, we are going to make a building that is very energy tight. It's well insulated, it's well sealed, it's handled well, it has high efficiency heating and cooling systems that are yet still able to be maintained by the kinds of staff and consultants and contractors the township typically uses. Also, this is the equipment that can be replaced in the years to come with higher efficiencies, if that's the township's desire. And then as far as using solar, I'll say that's something we have used on a new number, a good number of our projects. And so far, even though the price of solar has dropped significantly, and I'm reading the same things, probably most of you are, it's down 90%. My goodness, you should put solar everywhere, it's cheaper than any other way to bring energy into a building. And while that may be true on the raw cost for the panels, so far as we're tracking costs with actual contractors and projects, there is still a premium to bringing in solar power to a project and where do you put the panels, et cetera. Our hope is for the township that providing a good, long-term, very energy tight building that for the money that maybe the township can afford today, as they look forward to the future, maybe in the years to come, the, you know, the solar shingles that Tesla and others have out there might become even more cost effective, and when you go the next time to re-roof the building, maybe you use those. Or as the solar panels installed cost continues to drop, maybe you could provide some of those onsite. What you can't change easily in the future is to add more insulation or buy better insulating and tighter fitting windows and doors. So we're trying to help you spend your monies in ways that are, that are very long lasting and leave you the options to gradually enhance this as things become more cost effective. So hope that helps.
Thank you.
So I did want to go back, obviously, it's just kind of not on this, it's not on this sheet, which is kind of reiterate, you know, the, the use of the space from the overall programming standpoint, again, that didn't change from design one to design two. Really, if we kind of scroll, I'm scrolling back up there. But if you, if you look at the delta between design one and design two, really what, what the driving factor between that is the masonry. So there's a couple of things that change here and there as far as the structure, but the bulk of what drives that cost is that masonry number. In order to, you know, I'll say to do, create the appearance for that second design, really the building height needed to increase, otherwise with that low slope roof, the building kind of starts to look kind of short and squatty. And so there just needed to be an increase in elevation to accomplish kind of a, that, that look. And so that's really what drives the cost there is it's just, it's a greater square footage of both masonry as well as brick, and everything else really just kind of starts to trade itself out.
So there's no functional difference between the two designs?
There is not, no. There is not, the programming, the interior layout all remained the same, so nothing changed other than the, I'll say the exterior envelope and roof structure.
I have a question for you. One of the things that I watch and I've been condemned for by, by some of my peers, the contingency fees. What's your track record on our using up all that money or using as little as needed?
I would say our track record for, I would say, 80% of our projects, we have contingency savings that is returned to the owner. So our contract with Cascade Township is a guaranteed maximum price. Again, we're open book, we share those transparent in how we use those contingencies and what they're used for. But I would say easily on our projects, probably about 80% of them, we have a, we have a savings return to our clients.
I like hearing that, thank you.
So I'm gonna jump in unless there's any questions specific to the, I'll say the, the screen you see there, I was just gonna kind of hit high level. We were seven million, now why are we nine? So unless there's any questions, I'll, I'll jump into that.
Go for it.
All right, so again, kind of, kind of just take a step back. So Triangle Associates, so we were hired as the construction manager back in 2021. And at that time, I believe there was about a $7 million budget that was proposed for the new fire station. And my understanding again, we did, we did not prepare the first budget. We, Williams did not prepare the first budget, so this is Triangle and Williams' first effort at looking at what the programming needs are, looking at what the building needs are and developing a budget. So this is our, our first look at that. So the original budget was developed in November of 2020. And sitting here today in June of 2022, you would ask, you know, what happened to the $7 million budget? I would say, and I don't mean this condescending, 2021 happened to the, to the 2020 budget. I think we've all heard that, you know, costs of material labor is just changing exponentially, and that is a real, a very real world that we're living in specifically into construction. So like I mentioned, we, Triangle, we do a lot of work within the K-12 market. We do a lot of bond campaigns that kind of extend over three, five years periods of time. We're going to market with different projects at least once a month. And so when we look at this budget, we're using what we know to be the, what the market is telling us right now. So when we look at these, we don't look at them in a vacuum, we look at them, we, we put it out to market, we get current feedback. And so I would tell you that across the board, the cost increases that we've seen from 2020, 21, and now what we're seeing today, we're about 20% across the board, kind of like a project. So in this situation, if you were to take a $7 million project in 2020, and you're looking at it now in 2022, that's an $8.4 million project without just, just kind of that 20% across the board. I looked specifically at some items within our, our specific project. So just to kind of give you a specific example, when we did our takeoff, we said, all right, we've got 46 tons of steel in this building, and in 2020, we could buy a ton of steel for $3,600. Today, that same ton of steel is $8,400. The cost of steel has risen, has risen 250% since 2020. So for our scenario, we're paying a delta of $220,000 more because of that cost increase. So that's just, that's just one specific item that we looked at that really is, and, and so that's just within our structural steel. But keep in mind that so much of what we touch includes steel, our appliances that we purchase include steel, our fire suppression, our plumbing, our electrical, all of those have that same metal steel factor in it. The light gauge trusses that we're gonna buy includes steel and metal components. So that, that 20% across the board is both conservative and realistic. Because we're just, we're being, you know, we're, we're being faced with just material and cost escalations and labor escalations like, you know, that we haven't seen before. So again, that's just kind of a high level example. Mark did mention too, I mean, there, there are some items that have changed since we first, since that budget was first put together. I'm trying to look at some of these guys here, like I mentioned, from when that budget was first compiled, we've got about another $200,000 worth of site work and storm detention that we need to do in order to meet today's code. Mark mentioned the tornado shelter, again, we, it's kind of hard, you, you gotta try to kind of extract that from the space, as Mark mentioned, we're using that tornado shelter efficiently because we're using it as occupiable space. But there are additional things that we had to do in order to create a tornado shelter. You start looking at that, and that's a $25,000 premium to go with the tornado shelter. We looked at again, that, that warm cold zone where we can keep those, those particulates away from our firemen and keep them safe. And when we start looking at those additional air scrubbers and what it's gonna take to separate those space, that's another $118,000 of cost based upon the mechanical systems. So as we say, as we go through a lot of these items and we start looking at, what were we looking at when we had a $7 million budget? Some things have changed that we have no control over and have been added to the project, and then there's things have changed that we have no control over, which is our, the market fluctuation that we're experiencing today. So I am ready to take any specific questions you might have.
No, you can't say for sure, but the fluctuation, do you have any insight on the trend going forward? Like, is it's not gonna get better, it's gonna get?
I, I will say that, you know, the, the advice that we are giving our clients is that your building is never gonna be any cheaper than it is today. We, we have no cause to believe that any of these costs are gonna come down. Because if, if you were to ask, you know, why did the steel price increase? There's lots of different reasons for that, and none of those reasons are going away anytime in the near future. So I'd say for anybody to say that with any real conviction of yes, it's gonna change, or no, it's not gonna change, it's a kind of a crystal ball effect because we've, we've seen lumber prices go up. This isn't a building that requires lumber for its structure, we've seen lumber prices go up. We've seen them drop a little bit, but they haven't dropped to, I'll say, pre-pandemic pricing. And while they come down, something else goes up, like membrane roofing. I mean, we've, within the last four months, have experienced a price increase of, you know, double what we used to pay for membrane roofing and insulation. So it feels like when one of the bad guys goes away, another bad guy drops in his place, so. Any other questions on the, the budget?
Very well done, by the way, thank you.
Do we have any more information to share, or are you looking for the?
Um, I think our next slide is just question and the answer, so I know, I don't know if Mark's got any wrap up, but I would say, you know, from our standpoint, again, from, I think from both Williams and Triangle standpoint and the chief's standpoint, you know, we're, we're an efficient building, there's not a lot of bells and whistles on the building from a standpoint that, you know, there's, unfortunately, this, this is, this is the market that we're in. The market's telling us that this is a nine, nine and a half million dollar project right now. And so there's really not, there's not a way to attack it, you know, we can't, we can't start cutting program. I looked vaguely, I don't ever like to do a square footage analysis because I don't think it's a good way of looking at a building because there's lots of things that you have to have, regardless of how big your building is. But even if we start, you know, stripping some of those things away, knowing that our site can't change, knowing that our certain things can't change, if I start stripping those items away and say, okay, what does this building cost? The only way to drop that kind of money out of your budget is to start cutting program to the tune of 25% of your building. And we can't lose 25% of the building from a standpoint that 25% of the building is more than the fireman's living quarters altogether, so we're just, we're, we're we're kind of where we're at.
Yeah, I'll just note that I talked to Chief Tibbetts down at Callan's Zoo in their Department of Public Safety, they just approved to go ahead on their Station Two, which is about a 16,000 square foot station for construction this year. And they had a, they had a $7.3 million budget last year, and those are what the bids came back at, so they had five qualified bids and they're all in the mid-nines to high nines and even over 10. Just to, just to kind of back up with Brian, we're saying that that is their latest local comparable in the West Michigan area for a fire station.
Any questions from the audience, comments?
Is for us to discuss?
Thanks, yeah, discussion? Motions?
I'm just waiting for the chief's presentation. I have some questions there, but not from our illustrious design team.
But I would, I would defer to the expertise on presenting to Williams and Triangle, but I can, I can certainly say that my design team is all right here, they were elected by their peers. They've spent the greater part of two years working on this project, so they have a ton vested in this, that's why they're here tonight. From my perspective, couldn't be prouder of, of the design that they came up with, with Williams and Triangle. Yeah, I just, I know that it's a lot of money as a taxpayer, I get it. I just, I, I worry that if this does get delayed more, that nine and some change becomes 10 and change, 11 and change. I also know too that we are paying on a leased facility right now at 8,000 plus a month, so the meter's running on that as well. I just encourage, if, if we do go to a, a public engagement session, again, we've had numerous, I mean, I will know that I believe every public engagement session to this point has had 90-some percent approval. If we, and we'd be happy to, in the next eight months, host any citizen that wants to tour our facility to explain the floor plan, to be able to articulate the need for this space. I can personally vouch that every square foot of that floor plan is needed. Uh, I can personally vouch that every square foot of that uh, floor plan is needed, um. A- anything that, that would be cut to try and save some money would um. Probably. Cut something that is a standard or a requirement going forward on a new facility, so it, there isn't a whole lot of meat on the bone to cut. Um, but certainly, as a taxpayer. I can understand uh, being uh, concerned about the money, um, but right now. Right now, that is uh, that is, that is a going rate, and if, and if that's something that the public or the board doesn't support, we'll figure it out. But uh, I, I would encourage um. Us to be diligent about this process going forward because there is, there's a lot of time constraints, uh, and I don't see it getting a whole lot better.
For discussion purposes, I prefer the cheaper design. If we can save money.
Yeah, both, both designs are fantastic, that, that really is a, as a, as a board and, and public uh. So from the board's standpoint or the public standpoint, the fire department would be fine if you put vinyl siding on it, they just want to get moving.
I would just like to say, chief, don't apologize, first of all. Because this is what the taxpayers have said they have wanted to spend money on, we want fire protection, we appreciate fire protection, you guys are doing a great job. We know it's gonna be nine million dollars instead of seven million. To me, another six hundred thousand isn't a big deal because I, I feel like this, I like design too because it is a. Comes across strongly as a very much a hundred year building, it's gonna withstand a hurricane. And it is a very strong presence and I think it would be a really great representation of Cascade Township, you're only gonna build it once, I think you should build the best you can. And um, not apologize, all those shingles would be very expensive to replace, whereas if you start with more. Brick and mortar at the beginning, it seems like a higher cost now, but in maintenance, long term, it will not be as costly also.
Good point, uh, chief, I'm gonna get right to the point, you like design one or design two?
You know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm hesitant to, to give a vote on this because I, I think, I don't want the public or the board. To defer to what the fire chief wants.
Well, let, let me put this, let me put it this way. From our experience with flat roofs in this township. It's horrendous, okay, Michigan is bad for flat roofs. Uh, the existing building has been repaired or replaced numerous times. So I think that the peak roof would be a better design for the Michigan weather. That's my two cents word.
I appreciate that.
The only thing is, is this flat, that, from talking to them, they said low slope is, there's a big difference between flat and low slope as far as.
Yeah, they, they actually said, they actually said design two, the roof would probably have a thirty plus year lifetime versus. Design one is kind of a fifteen year lifetime, so.
Versus membrane.
Yes, and I, I, I think what we all want to do is.
If I can just kind of jump in here, from a constructability standpoint, um. Flat roofs shouldn't leak, you know, they, they shouldn't leak, just like our shingled roof shouldn't leak. Um, and if they do, um, there's a, there's a proper problem with the way in which they were constructed, I promise chief, um, if we, if we did a flat roof or a low slope roof or a shingle roof. Um, it's not gonna leak, um, so i- it's just, it, it really isn't how it's built, um, and how it's constructed and. Um. You know, there, there's, there's pros and cons to both of them, um, but. Uh, a membrane roof shouldn't, shouldn't trigger everybody's mind that you're gonna have stained ceiling tiles, um, because that's, that's not the way they're, they're meant to work.
Uh huh. I give you my opinion.
I appreciate that, I will say from the firefighter's standpoint, whatever you pick or whatever, whatever the public likes, um, will not hurt our feelings, either way, we are a hundred percent. Good with whatever you choose.
Oh, chief. You and I discussed a little bit earlier, that there's some. Opportunity here that you took to build in some training facilities, much like they have in Portage.
Correct.
Which is fantastic, it probably added a couple dollars here or there. Who's your tr- current training officer?
Uh, current training officer is Captain Stevenson, he's actually in the audience tonight.
Stand up Stevenson. Do not come back to this board and ask for a new training facility at Station Two if we go with this route, do you understand?
It's worth it.
Sit down.
Understand that, uh, there is a live burn facility just to our south at Thornapple Township that we've had a pretty good partnership with, so that is an opportunity we could let.
You can also use the airport, they have burn facility there.
Correct.
Good place to use foam.
Right.
Depends on who you're asking.
Right.
That's all I have, thank you. Thank you, Todd.
I just had a question on the fifteen, twenty year shingle, I know in residential I can get thirty five to fifty year shingles, uh, the reason why we can't do that on the shingles?
Uh, speaking for Williams here for a moment, the shingles that we would select and specify, uh, there, there are shingles that are anywhere from twenty five to forty five year shingles that we can choose from. Again, that's their warranties, uh, most shingle warranties are prorated time wise, so if it's a thirty year shingle and it lasts twenty nine years, you get one thirtieth. Back, so that's something I always remember about warranties. Uh, so yes, we've done some forty five year shingles and uh, we did a building twenty years ago with those and as far as I know, they are still performing. You know, like very, very well and hasn't had an issue. Um, although those would cost more than the ones I believe Triangle has in their budget right now. The low slope roof systems, we can choose between fifty year twen- I mean fifteen year, twenty year and thirty year warranty levels. For these roofs, of course, there are cost factors that go with that, uh, as far as the material they use and how they're detailed, so there is some costs that continue to rise. I know I saw a comment from somebody about doing a metal roof on this. Again, a good quality metal roof can last, uh, you know, twenty, thirty, sometimes fifty years depending on the materials used, so. Those are all in, in the range of, of choices we have as we wrestle with your quality budget and, and goals.
I just would just chime in about the design one and design two, they're, they're both fantastic and we're gonna be happy with either one. Um, I just look at aesthetics, I think are really important, we're, we're a, a great community and we're a thriving community and we're gonna continue to be. Uh, I like the design two aesthetics, I, it's, the rendering isn't as nice as the rendering of one. And when you look at the cost difference, about five percent, this building's gonna be here fifty, sixty, seventy years. It's gonna speak volumes about the township, again, they're, they're both attractive, I just think design two just offers a little bit more and, and. It's maybe a five percent difference, but again, for something, it's a long term investment, we're gonna be here. Uh, unfortunately, probably, I, I won't be alive unfortunately in fifty years, um, or maybe that is fortunate, but. But the point is, is that the building's gonna be here for a long time and it's gonna really leave a, a kind of a mark about Cascade, and so. B- both do that and, and I'm proud of that and proud of what's been done and I thank the, the team for the work you guys have done the last two years. Because I really think that the functionality of the building is obviously more important. But I, I, I do like the aesthetics of, of two. Um, and I don't think looking over a fifty, sixty, seventy year investment period, that that's really anything that, when we bond this, it's really not gonna make a difference.
How would the motion or what would be the? Specifics as far as moving forward with the, to this second phase?
So I think what we're looking for is a selection of either design number one or design number two. And then authorization for Williams and Triangle to move on to the next phase of the design process.
Yes, because the goal is to get to the design development step. Which is really important.
And I think as, as part of that process, myself and chief will sit down with the, the team and we'll figure out, you know, as Brian was going over that schedule, you'll see there's a couple more. Uh, spots where they refine the budget, they refine the budget again. You know, as they refine the budget, that design contingency starts to come down, so there's a process where we can have another public meeting where we can come back and say. This is the design, this is the cost, this is how we're going to pay for it, so there's certainly opportunity to do that, we just need to take the next step in order to move that way.
So that sounds logically that, that would combine with our sending out postcards.
I prefer the second one as long as taxpayers are okay with the additional.
Well, I think some will, some won't, I mean, it's like.
For seventy five years, I think it looks really, they both look nice, but I think the second one looks really.
Okay, can we make a motion? With that, I would make a motion that we um. Select design two and uh, move this to the next, the dine, design development step, take the next step and authorize. Uh, township manager and the chief and the supervisor to move forward uh. To, to get to that design development step so we can get back the costs and then really know what, what we're really gonna be voting on.
A second? Sure. It wasn't set for public hearing, but it makes sense, so we'd love to hear from you.
My name is Wendy Sturm, I'm a resident, I live on Hunter Green Court. Hello, and I prefer design number one because it more closely reflects our community. If you look at our neighborhoods, many of our homes have hip roofs. If you look at our uh, village. And the design, the modern look of it, I think it reflects who we are today. And that hundred year old look. I don't see that anywhere in Cascade except, and even, even our township building, that little white building. Doesn't look anything like that. So. Really. Um, as we look to the future and we look to our new street lamps. And our sidewalks, walkways, and all of the progress that we're making in our township. To be, you know, beautiful, isn't going back to look like we're a hundred years old. It's more modern and contemporary and I really like design number one and for what, half million dollars less? I think uh, I think it represents Cascade very well. My opinion.
Thank you, it's gonna be hard, we're gonna be just happy and unhappy on both sides.
Read anybody else's opinion?
Yeah, anyone else? Anyone else want to speak?
Richard Marshall, I live on Sheffield, I'm a resident and very happy with it so far, um, I think the board should allow these gentlemen. Elected by their peers that went through all the effort and time, let them make the final decision one or two, I don't think the. Dollar amount is a factor at all, as Mr. McDonald said, um. The biggest thing I want to say is, thank you. For protecting us and, and serving us, and then thank you for putting the time and effort into what's right for us, um. And then, if I could leave you with, making sure it happens and moves forward. There's no reason to pay ten and twenty percent more twelve months from now, so.
Thank you.
Two million more than last year.
What is the question to the design team?
Uh, speaking for Williams, but we do need direction whether uh, design one or design two is the, the decision of the township. That we can move forward uh, with the design because very quickly after this uh, decision. We're gonna wrap up this connect design phase that then goes through the permitting process with site and appearance for the facility. And we really do move rapidly into more detailed drawings based on, on which concept of the township wants us to pursue. So. We really do need to hold here until uh, consensus or a decision can be made.
Supervisor Lasper, there is someone who would like to speak.
I just wanted to ask the fire fighters here, design one by a show of hands? Come on, design two, how many we got there?
What did Andy up?
Well, see, it's like I've always said, firefighters have got a backbone, they'll speak up with what their opinions are, it looks like one to me out there.
Thank you.
Um. I'm gonna let this person on Zoom talk one second, Mr. Whitley.
Uh, yes, uh, and this isn't particularly about one and two, but uh, a couple of things struck me uh, during the, the presentation there. Uh, one is that we have the forty person training room and a whole lot less than forty spaces of, of parking there. Uh, I, I don't know what can effectively be done to still make it, you know, have some green in the front and uh, but, but still have enough uh. You know, parking available for visitors and for training purposes. Uh, number two was the, the entrance doors, there was a lot of discussion about the, the benefits for ceiling and uh. Uh, you know, utilization and durability, whatever associated with the doors. Uh, and then they were only specified on the exit and not on the entrance, and so don't we have the same issues as far as ceiling and? Uh, you know, not having the, the various benefits that were touted for the uh, improved doors. Uh, and, and, you know, but they were only put on, on half the building. Uh, and I know the swinging door concept may be a problem on the, on the input side there, and they're more expensive, which nobody wants to, to do that, but. Uh, if the benefits for the swinging doors, you know, is there, then why is it only, you know, benefit for, for half the doors? Uh, the, the last thing is that the, the, the slope roof over the exit. Uh, to me, uh, you know, that was just a, a, a slight thing where if you don't do it really, really good, you're gonna have some issues, you know, during the winters there, so. Uh, that was the only thing I saw and uh, it doesn't pertain to the one versus two, but uh, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
I can speak, I can speak on the overhead door or the uh, the, the bay doors, uh, the ones in the front get used twice as much and those are the ones that. Firefighters tend to back into and, and hit, um, they're the ones that get, again, twice as much use, twice as much maintenance, um. Also too, when you're coming in from the back, you can see that it's all the way up as you're approaching, or when you're right underneath it, you can't see. Um, if it's halfway up, halfway down, coming down on your rig, uh, that's on the exit and that's, that's what happens, now we could put. Bi-fold doors on the backside if you want, um, but it would add hundreds of thousands and we're just trying to save money. And I will say too, though, it also, um. If anybody says it's in on one or two or, or either one, um, those are renderings where the brick color and all of that can be changed uh, to your liking, i- if, if, if you're hung up on any of that. For sure.
Is it possible if we move forward on um? The mo- the second one and then we get public feedback or a lot of it that's, we always, we were already at the SD?
Mark calls, we need to give him the direction tonight.
Okay, I'll second your motion, it might be unpopular, but I really liked the second one. Sure.
And. I agree with the people that already spoke here tonight, um, we're in a building that represents Cascade, it's beautiful, it's a hip roof and it's got shingles on it. We don't have a huge building that looks like the one that's number two anywhere in Cascade. We need to think about the people that are here in Cascade right now, not about the people that are gonna be here in a hundred years. Unless somebody on the board is planning on being at the fire station every day, we need to think about the people that are gonna be pulling in there. Every day, looking at that building. I think the number one is a beautiful design, they put a lot of time and effort into it. I saw many hands go up for number one, I didn't see any hands that represented firefighters for number two. And a half a million dollars is still a half a million dollars and I'm a taxpayer. So for you guys to say it's just a half a million dollars, that's my money too. So you wanna vote what the taxpayers want? Or want number one? Thank you.
I will say that we have worked. I've tried to support the, I think everyone on the board and the people on the public safety committee have sought fire, the chief has been fantastic and we have worked closely with the fire department, so. Think we still want to support the fire department, I don't think that's the issue. We're just not gonna all agree, but I'll support your motion, trustee McDonald. And I'll take the heat from it, but I hope that we can all move forward even though we have very different opinions on design. That was a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by supervisor Lesperance to move forward with the second design to the develop, or to the design development stage. Brooks Slater, why don't you call the role?
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Treasure Pierce?
No.
Trustee Shipley?
No.
Trustee Nordhook?
Yes.
Brooks Slater? Yes, supervisor Lesperance?
Yes. So that's four to two, um, for the second one, so, thank you. And thank you for the excellent presentations. Please keep us up to date on what you need from the board and timing wise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark.
Good job, you guys. Next item 007, 2022. Consider issuance of a request for proposals for a Thornapple River aquatic weed management program. Manager Swayze.
Great, thank you. So as we're all aware, the township recently approved the creation of the Thornapple River Special Assessment District. There's 301 properties in the SAD. Each property contributes $300 a year, and the SAD collects a total of $90,300 each year. The funds are available for the following stated stated purpose, to make certain improvements to the Thornapple River, including weed control and removal, debris removal and safety enhancements, and silt control and removal. So as part of the process in establishing the special assessment district, the township also created the Thornapple River SAD Ad-Hoc Committee to provide recommendations to the township board on how the fund should be utilized. So the committee met twice in December and January and has recommended the first step to be to procure the services of a qualified firm to assist in developing and implementing an aquatic weed management program. So at their last meeting, the committee reviewed the proposed RFPs, recommending the board authorize the issue of the RFP to secure bids. So if the board does choose to issue this RFP, it'll be put out tomorrow. The proposals due back on February 11th. The ad hoc committee will make evaluations the week of the 14th and make a recommendation to the township board by the 18th, which can be considered at the February 23rd board meeting. So I did include a copy of the RFP in your packet for your review. So when the committee met, it was clear that they felt that the beginning of the weed management program should be their top priority for 2022. But they also thought that given the scope of the project and the potential significant costs associated with a successful program, they would want to issue an RFP to ensure that there's the most effective and efficient program to be implemented. So the scope of work identified in the RFP includes the development and implementation of the aquatic weed management program for the Thornapple River in accordance with all federal, state, and local regulations. It suggests the focus should be on non-native weeds, though not necessarily exclusively. And then in the report, I did put out what the exact scope was of the project. So again, the Thornapple River SAD Ad-Hoc Committee is recommending the board approve the issuance of the RFP. So there's really not a whole lot of financial considerations for the issuance of the RFP, just the staff time related to the issuance. So the proposals are expected to detail costs for the program, including a survey of the river and development of implementation of the management plan. However, just from the responses, we won't necessarily know the full cost of the management program because the first part of it will, the company will have to come in and actually do the survey and put the program together. But we are expecting to be able to compare apples to apples costs when it talks about what the cost of the survey program is, what the cost of any treatment chemicals would be on a cost per acre basis or mechanical harvesting on a cost per acre basis. So with that, the committee has recommended that the township board approve the issuance of the request for proposals for Thornapple River Aquatic Weed Management Program.
Your motion or discussion?
I I move to approve the issuance of the RFP for the Thornapple River Aquatic Weed Management Program.
Oh, I sit on that that committee, and it is time-sensitive. And this was the direction the committee wanted to go first before addressing obstacles or silt control.
Is that a second?
Is that a second, John?
Yeah, sure.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald to move forward with the RFP as stated, supported by trustee Shipley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have a word how a motion would look like because it's technical, and then we can go from there. This would be, the issue would be whether or not to, it would be a motion to adjourn to a closed session based on MCL 15.268. This would be to discuss trial or settlement strategy in pending litigation right now. Specifically, the cases are Mayor versus Township of Cascade, docket number 21-003690-BSTT. Kenny versus Township of Cascade. That's docket number 21-003748. And the third being Clap versus Township of Cascade, docket number 21-003758. Because discussion in public would have or could have a detrimental financial effect on the township's trial or strategy, or excuse me, or settlement strategy. These three cases are set to be heard at the tax tribunal, and they relate to the Thornapple River Special Assessment District. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to go to closed session.
It's fine.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley, supported by trustee McDonald, to enter closed session to discuss the topic previously mentioned. Brooks Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Shipley?
Yes.
Treasure Pierce?
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Slater? Yes, supervisor Lasper.
Yes. Motion carried. We are now in closed session.
Andy?
Give family a hug for me.
I know, right?
I make a motion to go back into open session. Support.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley, to return to open session. All in favor of clerks later, please call the roll.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook?
Yes.
Treasurer Pierce?
Yes.
Trustee Shipley?
Yay.
Clerks Slater, yes. Supervisor Lassman.
Yes. We are now back in open session.
I make a motion that we instruct legal counsel to move forward for the closed session. Support.
It's a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley, to instruct counsel to move forward for a discussion in closed session. Clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Shipley?
Yay.
Treasurer Pierce?
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Slater, yes. Supervisor Lassman.
Yes. Motion carried. Article 11, discussion topics we have none tonight. So that brings us to the second portion of public comments. Article 12. Anyone wishing to speak is welcome.
Hello, my name is Lisa Grozier. And first and foremost, I just wanted to say that I am glad that we were able to move forward with a plan and that we didn't stall out with the fire department tonight. But I am, gotta say that I am disappointed in the board because I feel like every single resident that spoke up tonight spoke up in proposal for design one. The majority of the firefighters that I saw raised their hand, who they were trying to stay neutral from what I understand because their priority is moving forward. But when asked, they did, again, majority were in favor of design one. The board, however, went ahead and made a motion for design two, which I feel like was their own self-interest and not representative of our public, of our citizens, nor of our firefighters. So I hope that this doesn't end up turning out to be a disaster a little further down the road. When the rest of the township sees this and we send out the postcards and we have the rest of the citizens of the township take a look at this design, I hope that the rest of the citizens aren't concerned about this building being so architecturally different than the rest of the village of Cascade. I foresee potential concerns by the board going against what the residents and the firefighters of our township wanted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm still Candace Pullman and supervisor. I just want to address you and tell you that I feel like you lied to your entire community today. You stated that you wanted to do what the community and the taxpayers wanted. And I clearly told you that I wanted building number one. And everybody on this side of this podium here tonight, not one person even made a comment about wanting building number two. And as soon as I left this podium today, you immediately went with Mr. McDonald and said that you supported his motion for building number two. So those two things do not go together. You can't say that you're here for your community and your taxpayers when you're clearly here for your own agenda. That building matches nothing in our community. That was your personal design. That was your personal want. And you pushed it on all of us and we're all gonna pay for it. You lied to your community. And I hope that at the next meeting, all the people that can come to this meeting can be here and see that that's who you are and how you're representing this board and this community. And Mr. Nor Heck, I don't understand. You clearly voted or you clearly liked building number one when the lady was up there talking.
I do like building.
Why didn't you vote number two then?
I want to get this fire station moving forward. The interior design is the exact same.
Absolutely.
And these guys need a building. They can't, we're at that point where we have to get started on this. We gotta get bids.
And you knew your vote was the swing vote?
I did not know my vote was the swing vote.
So then why did you not vote your conscience?
I wanted, I wanted the guys to have that fire station.
And you knew that if you didn't vote your conscience, they weren't gonna get their fire station tonight?
We were just told that if they don't get started on this bid.
I understand that. But did somebody else tell you how to vote tonight?
We could be into the 2024 season.
I understand all of that.
They don't want to be.
Did you vote, did you vote your conscience tonight?
Yeah, I wanted these guys to have a fire station.
Okay.
That's what I wanted. You know, the design part, there may be some, there may be some changes. I don't know. They.
You didn't answer my question. Did you vote your conscience tonight?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Just disappointed that you pushed your own agenda and I have to pay for it.
Thank you.
Ken Van der Kock, 7200 Leighton. I am disappointed. You guys are gonna spend $600,000 extra for an eyesore. Like she said, everybody got up and said they wanted design one. And you quick shoved it on number two, just so you can push that thing through? I know these guys need a fire station. But you moved it through so quick, we lost money, didn't we? Hurry up, get her done. Hurry up, get her done. Don't listen to what the constituents want. Hurry up and get her done. Yeah, let's save Cascade all the money we can. Well, you didn't save us, they're $600,000 gone, isn't it? I'm gonna vote for the way the township people want. That's what I hear when I sit here. I'm gonna vote for the people, what they want. But you just blew $600,000 of mine. Nobody listened to what we wanted. The people here who got up and said something, I didn't get up. I figured it was gonna be one. You shoved administration building through, which looks very, very much similar to number one design. Now we're gonna have some old relic looking thing that's gonna be an eyesore that doesn't match anything around here? I think you messed up tonight.
Anyone virtually, Ms. Brett?
If any of our Zoom participants would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand. If you're participating via phone, please dial star nine. I'll wait a few moments. I don't think anyone wants to participate. Supervisor Lassman?
Okay. Article 13, Manager Swayze, any comments?
Yeah, just a couple of things tonight. So as we came back from the open session, I passed out Sabo PR's first crack at a quarterly report. As we talked about this the past couple of meetings, trying to get more information from them about the work that they're doing. There's a good combination of narratives about what they're up to and statistics in here. So I'd encourage everybody to take a look at it. Provide me some feedback about, or Hunter, about what you like and what you don't like. This will be a regular quarterly report that comes out from them now. So we also talked last couple of meetings about beefing up our East Precinct patrols. And I was able to touch base with their team. And they're coming up with both some short term and long term proposals for the township to consider for getting more police officers on the street in Cascade Township. So maybe an opportunity for the board to take a look at that at an upcoming meeting. And then trustee Norduck asked me to just give an update on the Alaska Ridge internet. So unfortunately, I don't have a lot of an update right now. So both us as a township and Foster Swift, one of their attorneys that has a good relationship with Comcast, have been talking to them about the project. And the cost is the cost. So you know, what we're trying to do now is a couple of different things. One, we're trying to figure out all of this extra infrastructure they have to put in. Where does that infrastructure go past, right? So part of the reason that the project is so expensive is because right now it only serves 12 houses. What if they had to put in, you know, a couple of miles of infrastructure? Is that infrastructure going past other neighborhoods? Maybe not in Cascade Township, maybe in Caldonia Township, where we might be able to get other customers for Comcast? Because the more customers that they have, they'll pay a bigger portion of that. So we're working on that information. And then, of course, we're still waiting for the county to decide how they're gonna allocate their art funds. They're looking at putting together a matching program, kind of like what the county does with the road commission, where the township puts up 50% of the dollars and the county puts up 50%. To be able to tap those funds, to make our funds go further and to be able to extend that to that. And that's all.
Have you heard anything from the county since that one meeting? Month, summertime, I think?
So I heard from their deputy administrator, just before their new county administrator took office. She said they were bringing up to speed. And I haven't heard from them since, but I can certainly check back in with that. And then our county commissioner, Mandy Bolter, is involved in that project too. So she might be able to.
Could you also give us the details for residents about the PFAS meeting coming up in February?
Yeah, definitely. So February 3rd, in this room, we're gonna have our neighborhood meeting for the PFAS water extension project. It's an opportunity for the whole community, but the residents that live in the area, specifically, were invited to come out and hear from the engineers that are designing the project, to hear from the city of Grand Rapids, to hear from Eagle, to hear from Kent County Health Department, and of course, to hear from the township and our legal council as well about the project. So there'll be a presentation and then a long opportunity for people to ask questions and get answers. So it'll be in this room, but of course, we'll have access via Zoom as well. And the Zoom will be interactive. So just like the board meeting, people wanna watch from their comfort of their home, but they wanna make sure they can ask the appropriate questions. They'll be able to do that over Zoom as well.
Six to eight o'clock, February 2nd?
Yeah.
February 3rd.
Sorry, February 3rd. Making sure you're on your toes.
It is posted as a meeting of the township. So if the board members want to attend, you can certainly come and not be. You know, we just posted to make sure that we.
Thank you. Article 14, any board member comments?
Yep.
Always, as I have always done, I'm just staying until the end of the board meeting. I sure wish I would've had more people here all the way to them, but old faces are always comfort. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Ms. Durham, thank you. Do I speak to you in person? I know we don't agree on everything as far as designs, but I do appreciate everyone's feedback.
Everybody loves the inside and I think everybody totally saw the fires. So I think we're more like-minded than not like-minded. There is a design zone. You know, I mean, there's a lot of things to say about it.
It's funny because I was like, that is, it's just, I get it. I just had a different perspective. I thought it looked really, really good.
I don't think it was bad. Design one looks more like so many of the structures in our community. It was just kind of relaxed. And Candace's.
No, it's good. I just mean.
Good, you're thinking about it. Anyone else wanna comment or any, anything?
Better. I move to adjourn.
Okay. Any second?
A second.
The motion by trustee McDonald, supported by clerk Slater, to adjourn. All in favor? Any opposed? Return. Thank you for coming tonight.